There was another topic that was addressed at the workshop today. Item number 25 is approval of the contract between Sarasota County School Board and, I'm going to say Flatiron, I can't help it, Facilitron to manage the rental and reservation process for all school board-owned facilities. And I know there was a good discussion around that process. So, moving on to new business.
I move the denial of the charter application for Pinecrest Academy.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. Any comments? Mrs. Brown?
I think a lot of our speakers today gave a lot of information. When this item was brought up, it said, you know, Academica was the managing partner. It wasn't until I looked further that I realized it really isn't a managing partner. They own Pinecrest. It's the same person that started Academica that's listed as the owner of Pinecrest, who started Pinecrest. And my understanding is that Academica controls Pinecrest down to who will be on their board. There will be no local members on the board. The board will be meeting down in Miami. Academica chooses who will be on that board, and Academica runs the agenda. Academica chooses who is going to be employed at that school. So, it looks to me, even though it's wrapped up in a not-for-profit school, it's not really a not-for-profit school when you've got Academica charging from 5% to 18% fees and charging above-market rent for the building. That is something that I've seen in a lot of these corporations that are overseeing our charter schools, not our charter schools in Sarasota, I'm talking about charter schools in general, that becomes more about the money than it is about the children. It's all about building the school. In fact, they've got another program, Building Hope, that actually helps build the schools. They've got somebody else that helps design the schools. They've got somebody else that helps finance the building of these schools. I think there's over 238 different businesses that are at that same address. So, it doesn't look like it's a school that's going to be run, you know, in the interest of Sarasota, because obviously they hadn't even checked into Sarasota. And I also have a concern that they want to double the amount of schools. I'm talking Pinecrest. They've got seven now. They want to have seven more by next year. And if we do this, it would be eight more, and there's another one out there. I think that's going too far, too fast, so I would have a concern about that. And why I have a concern also is Sarasota County taxpayers pay for this. Yes, the state sets the amount of how much it is, but, you know, 90% of the funding for our schools come from the local taxpayers. Tallahassee sets the amounts that we can set, that we can assess, but the majority of the dollars that will be going to this school will be Sarasota County. And I don't think it's a good use of our tax dollars to turn it around and give it to a for-profit company that's out of the county. And I don't think they're in the best interest of the child, even though Pinecrest has, they put the plan together, they dotted their i's, they've crossed their t's, and it looks pretty good. And I know some people say, "Well, you know, they filled it out, they met this, they met that, and we have to approve it." And I'm thinking, I think Indian River showed us that we do not have to approve it. And even if they go to the state and the state overrides us, we still don't have to accept that. So, I ask you to vote yes and vote no on this school. So, it'll be a yes vote, that'll be a denial.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodwin?
Well, you know, my concerns are that, you know, we have anyone invested in this project in Sarasota County, and that's so unlike us. We always have. We have wonderful charter schools, and they're all, except for Imagine Charter School, which is also a good partner, all of our charter schools are really homegrown. We have a charter school in Palmer Ranch. So, what are we going to do? Take the students from Palmer Ranch Charter School, Imagine School, and move them over? If we were looking to build a new school today, we probably wouldn't have the ability to do that unless we moved all of our students in a very compact way around to different schools to get that acknowledgement and get that ability to do that. So, we know that we'll be robbing from schools to incorporate other students into your school. And we think we do a great job with elementary. We think we do a fabulous job with middle schools, with our tech-active STEM schools. And very frankly, I don't know where the capacity for these students is going to come from. And that leaves me feeling badly because I didn't see that in the application alone. And I really am a person who looks at that capacity, and I do not see it, and I don't feel comfortable in voting for this application.
Thank you. Excuse me, Mrs. Zucker?
As I read this application, I couldn't help but feel that we are so intent on having community involvement in our schools and parent involvement. There's none in here, none at all. It's like you're coming in, taking students, educating them, and sending the money out, but no involvement of our community at all in your school. And I just cannot abide by that. The CRC understands that this application is a standard replication of a school model and not a high-performing school replication. I mean, you have, the two schools that you're presenting as your high-performing schools only account for two out of nine of your schools. So, what is wrong with the rest of your schools? Are they not high-performing? I know some of them are Ds and Cs, and maybe that's why they're not part of the list of high-performing. But to pick and choose what schools you want to model after, and then at the same time, your academic educational programs, instruction and learning methods may not be considered innovative because they incorporate many of the programs currently offered in Sarasota's traditional schools. So, why do we need another school if we're already offering these things in our community? Just hang on one minute, I have one more here. Again, this is, to me, this is a model school and not a high-performing, as has been suggested. And I also do not like to see our tax dollars, and I'm a taxpayer, go to another community. I do not like to see us overcharged for education, and it will cost more to educate the kids in this Pinecrest school. I cannot vote, and my conscience will not allow me to vote in favor of this school.
Thank you. I first want to thank everyone for emailing, reaching out to all of the board members, and speaking today. I know that the passion is for our students, and I think that we find ourselves in a unique predicament right now. You know, I share some concerns. I think there are a couple elements that I have concerns about, and it's on a couple different areas. But first, I believe that there's a lot of value when our community is involved, and we've seen that be successful in Sarasota County. However, we also have a process, and it has gone through that process, and our committee has given higher ranks, higher than I have actually seen in other charter schools that have come before us since I've been on the board. Where I wanted to see and take a moment and ask legal counsel is, in the event this denial, this motion to be denied is approved and it's appealed, is the Sarasota County School District, and the appeal is upheld, are we responsible for the legal fees? Recoup, but not, we are not responsible for...
If it goes to the State Board and the State Board makes such a ruling, then I believe we are just responsible for our own fees when those come back.
Okay, because I was told that it was July 1st that does change. But that's just one piece.
You're taking the action now.
Well, that's it, that's why I wasn't sure, from the clarity. Okay.
I don't know if that would apply to proceedings after July 1st, or whether it would revert back to the date that the board vote was taken.
Okay.
So, I can't answer that.
Okay, thank you. So, that was just one thought. But even for that part, you know, for me, I think Sarasota County District-managed schools, so as known as traditional public schools, I think we have excellent schools. I think we see the presentations here all the time, and I think that's important for our families to know that we are working hard to continue that high standard, that excellence. I think I've seen in certain areas, as the choice movement has provided options for a variety of families, that some are the perfect fit for their families, and some, and that gives them that option. But it also has allowed our district to be better, where we've seen enrollment go down, we've looked, taken a step back and looked, what can we do better to attract our students and families back to our schools? And I think that's to the betterment of our entire Sarasota County school community. I recognize where there's concern, but at the same time, I say, I'm concerned that we have a process, we should follow it. But I don't think that we should deter ourselves and not be up for the challenge to make our schools the best choice. I remember someone saying that school choice is not, that they weren't intimidated by the choice movement, because they're going to make Sarasota County schools the best schools. And I think there's validity in that. If you think about any other competitive market, and I know this is a school district, and you don't think about, you don't want to be talking about profitability, but the competitive nature makes us do our best. And I think that's challenged us and has moved us, I think that's moved Sarasota County forward. So, for me, I know I had, I was concerned about, I know Mrs. Brown mentioned this, and a number of speakers said this, and this is something I, as I reviewed it, I am concerned about, that there, to have that many schools, that they're projected to open in a short amount of time, that's concerning. But I think that, at the same time, I want our community to have choice and options. I want them to be educated and know what's in the best interest, and the families make those choices. I think the process is in place. If we want to go back and look at that, I think our committees invest a lot of time and resources. And I think, I've said this before on other topics, that if we have committees and processes, I think we need to believe in that, or we need to go back and review that, because I think that it's an investment in our employees and our staff time, from the resource standpoint. So, I am going to vote down the denial, but I don't want those comments that were made today, I want to make sure that that's not lost on me. But I think that we have done a tremendous job. I think that the competition has made Sarasota County District-managed or traditional public schools better, and so that's where I stand today. Mrs. Zucker?
I understand competition. I understand competition in the workplace. But unfortunately, we're not making widgets. We're educating children. They only go through grade 6-0.
Thank you.
They only go through a grade one time, and that's the only opportunity they have to get through that grade. I do not want to be someone who fails those students going through that grade, just so we can have competition.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, Ms. Ziegler had made some very excellent points, and I agree. If you want to beat the charter schools, the way to do it is to make our public schools better. That's how you beat the charter schools. And I just wanted to reiterate some other people have said, is that the CRC does a wonderful job, especially under Dr. Roca. I've observed her, and I've seen how she's tried to be, bent over backwards to try to be as fair as possible to the applicants, and I think she plays a wonderful role. Unfortunately, when it gets to us at the board, I have to take a different role, and it's more use my legislative discretion, and when I'm looking at things. And so, I'm looking at the curriculum, and I'm looking at the plans. And from my point of view, I found them deficient when I look at the criteria outlined in Statute 1002.33. And because I found some conflicts between their goals, and their curriculum, and their plan, that I, after reading multiple times, I couldn't reconcile in my head some of these conflicting curriculums. And to me, at the end of the day, it's about the curriculum, how you're going to teach people, the reading plan, and I didn't find those things up to the standard that I would want them to be. And so, because I found them deficient in their curriculum and their reading plans, I'm going to have to vote no on that.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown?
I think I'm closing right now. You know, there's no doubt that, you know, public schools have been under attack in the state of Florida. Laws have been changed, and I understand there's even a new one coming onboard July 1st about legal costs involved challenging to these. But I don't think we should let that stop us right now. I think we need to stand up for public schools. We need to stand up for the changes that are being made against public schools in favor of these for-profit, not only charter schools, but the other private schools that are out there too. And I just urge my members to vote yes on the motion to deny.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodwin?
Well, I think all these were valid points. I think Mrs. Ziegler had some valid points as well. But I really feel in my heart that this is the right thing to deny. And I think that it has to do with capacity. I think it has to do with involvement in our community, and it has to do with curriculum. So, it really has to do with all three of those things. And I would just say that, you know, I hope that some of you will look at the legislative session each year and see what goes on legislatively, because where are you when I need you when I'm in Tallahassee? But basically, I will vote to deny.
Mrs. Zucker?
I keep switching back and forth here. What we need from you, you're here tonight, but what we need from you is to stay tuned. We need help legislatively. If you, we're doing what we think is the right thing, but we need you to stay with us and not disappear after this issue, because unless you become part of this system and work with us, we're alone. So, we need you.
Thank you. There any other comments?
Madam Chair, just to clarify the question you asked me previously. The statute has changed with regard to a potential award of attorney's fees, but that is in a termination proceeding.
Okay.
If, in the event the board were to terminate or non-renew an existing charter, that appellate process has been changed as of July 1st, including the potential award to the prevailing party of attorney's fees.
Okay, thank you for the clarity. Unless there are any other comments, I have a motion that the Pinecrest Academy Gulf Coast Charter School application to the school board be denied as presented. All members in favor of the motion on the table, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes no, so the motion passes four to one. Moving on to, thank you, moving on to item number 33.
Yes, Madam Chair, the item number 33, the application from Dreamers Academy, has been withdrawn. We expect to see that back before the board later this fall, but at this point in time, the application has been withdrawn from the applicants.
Thank you for the update. If I may make a comment on that, I just wanted to say that I, again, I know, as I mentioned this at the previous workshop, I think there's a lot of great spirit and innovation in what was presented, and so I'm very pleased that the, I want to see collaborative working relationships as we strengthen the education of our students, and I really appreciate what was brought forward, and I look forward to seeing a successful recommendation come forward. Mrs. Brown?
I too wanted to say, I appreciate the person bringing that forward, and hopefully we can work out some of those kinks, because this definitely is one that came from the community and is looking to solve a perceived problem we have with our district, and I hope we can work, the district can work with you and come up with something and bring it back next year. Thank you.
Thank you. That moves us to, and if I don't have, I have item number 34.
Item number 34, approval for the addition of telehealth services with Teladoc to be added to the medical insurance program effective August 1st, 2018, as presented.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. Are there any comments? Is there any clarity on, any detail that, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot there, I don't know if Mrs. Corcoran is here, but...
Yes, it's an additional benefit for our employees, the ability to connect with a doctor. I want to say telepathically, but that is not the correct...
Flatiron?
I know what that word means.
Again, we're going to do a voice vote, just because my computer's not up, so I...
All of our computers.
Okay, so, I am, let me, Mrs. Brown?
I want to clarify this. So, it's a service that's added, and so that if our employees want to, not telepathically, but telephonically, pick up the telephone or go online and talk to a doctor, they can talk to a doctor and get doctor's advice, and it'll cost $40 this year and $42 next year. And is that part, is that covered under the insurance if they meet a, does that...
With Teladoc, which is the preferred vendor with Florida Blue, the cost will be...
Can you hear, you can't hear me?
The cost will be, to the plan, $40 for 2018 and $42 for 2019. The employee will pay their co-pay for a primary care visit less $5. That's what the present...
So, the employee pays the co-pay?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Currently, their co-pay is outlined as between 20, 25, and a percentage, but it will all be between $15 and $25. So, they'll be $5 less than what they currently pay.
What, by HMO?
The HMO will be the same. It will be $5 less than the current primary care visit co-pay. And the low PPO is the actual plan that benefits the most, because they are the ones that pay a percentage, and they will pay a flat fee for that co-pay of $25.
Very good. Any other questions? Thank you very much. The item is before us, the telehealth services that with Teladoc be added to the medical plan effective August 1st, 2018, be approved by the board as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and it passes unanimously. Moving on to the next item on new business.
I would move that the school board approve the interlocal agreement between School Board of Sarasota County and the City of Sarasota to provide for the temporary closure of School Avenue.
I have a motion.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. Mrs. Brown?
We had extensive discussion at the Sarasota County, Sarasota City Commission meeting about this and why it's so important. We need to have our school facilities secure, and the perimeter fencing isn't really secure if, in fact, we have to leave it open to, for the sidewalks. So, we need to close that entire street during the school hours, and I think we've got it between, is it 6:30 and 10?
Yes.
6:30 a.m. and 10 on the days that school is in session, and we owe it to our students and our staff to help them be safe. When I heard that some of these students are now sitting and saying, when the fire alarm goes off, is it safe to go? And I understand there's a state that, I was reading it, that they allow them up to three minutes to make the determination on whether or not they should leave when a fire alarm goes off. This is not the kind of schools that I went to. Our kids are living in a different reality, and we need to make sure they're safe. We cannot allow pedestrians and bikers and strollers and scooters to get onto that property during the school hour. It is not safe, so...
And I might mention, excuse me, I might mention, Mrs. Brown, that, you know, we've had people that have been taking pictures of our students coming on the school grounds lately, and, you know, with bikes riding really fast and so forth, and that's really a scary thing for our students.
A lot of people think it's just the shooter. That's not the only problem, is not that, that may never happen, you know, and hopefully it will never happen, that an active shooter comes onto Sarasota High property. It's those everyday occurrences where you might get somebody looking for a fight, you might get somebody looking to meet up with a girlfriend and take her off campus, or, you know, might be nothing, but whether their intentions are good or bad, they go through the front door. They don't go through the entrances on the sidewalk.
Mrs. Goodwin?
And just one aside, you know, we took, we had some students who came down on trolleys and came to the meeting with the City of Sarasota, and that wasn't paid by the school district, and they were, some people were taking their pictures as they got back on the trolley, which they shouldn't be doing that. That is not, that's invasion of privacy. But at any rate, I just think that this is the first step in what hopefully will be a step to really close School Avenue.
Thank you. I, you know, I have to take a minute, and I really want to commend Mr. Lempy, Mrs. Kathy Eba, I don't know if she's in here, and all the work that has been done. This is not just, this is not something that has been discussed just after Parkland. This has been a long-time discussion, and it's truly in the effort to ensure that we have a safe environment for our students. And Mrs. Brown made that point earlier, is it's not just about the active shooter component, while that is definitely one area where it does help us, you know, keep our students safe, but there's a myriad of other elements. And we are responsible for our students as soon as they come on to our campus and until they leave. So, I am, this is one step forward, and I'm very pleased to see this. And I also want to thank the City Commission for meeting with us, listening to us. I hope that they will follow suit, and assuming this gets approved and adopted, that they will also encourage them to do so as well, and continue the conversation to a full vacation. So, unless there are any additional comments, can we please, members vote on the item before us?
Aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye, I'm sorry, excuse me, and the motion passes unanimously. Next item on new business.
To approve the advertisement of the changes to all the policies in Chapter 9 of the school board policy.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. Any comments? Mrs. Brown?
We did a, we're going through a review of all of our policies. Policy 9 was pretty, Chapter 9 was pretty easy. There was just some minor changes to law, references and things like that, and these are just minor cleanups that we're doing here.
Thank you. I, this is one of the first major chapters that we've gone through in our policy review, and I really appreciate the work, again, with staff and members of the board that have done this, so thank you for that. And now, if there are no additional comments, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and the motion passes unanimously. Item number 37.
Approval of the new Communications Department organizational structure as presented.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a motion in a second? Are there any comments? Mrs. Zucker?
I just have one comment. I'm in favor of the restructuring. I'm concerned, and I guess I'm not supposed to be concerned about one employee, but I am, is an employee that worked for us for 16 years who will now be without a position. And I'm not happy about that, because we're a large school system, we have many avenues of needs, and I can't understand why this employee has not been approached and something done to help him.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodwin?
I feel the same way. I was going to make that exact same point. You know, 16 years is a long time to work, and I would hope that we could find something that could enable him to continue with us.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown?
I can echo some of that, but I also want to say that I am glad we're looking at this restructuring, because there was some discussion that communications have changed, a lot of it is social media now. And we made a mistake earlier and went outside on that, and we've realized that was a mistake, and we're coming back, and we're going to be doing this from the inside now, and we're going to have our staffs doing it, and the head of our Communications Department will be overseeing that and making sure that any comments that are made and whatnot are right and follow the law on that.
Thank you.
But we'll be doing it in-house.
I agree, a couple things. I think that, and this has been no secret, I think that the communication piece is so critical for us to continue to strengthen our partnerships with our families, our various partners, and it's a critical role. And I am pleased to see us modernize this department over some years, and I know that there were certainly some missteps, but I think it was intended to bring us forward and have a better path of communication. And I'm pleased with the restructuring and the movement we've done forward. I think that Mrs. Beaker has done a tremendous job. I think that you have had a lot to... I think that you have had a lot to manage, and I think you've done it well. As it relates to members who have worked in this district for some time and done... You know, my experience has been wonderful, however, and it's a challenge, and I recognize that the restructuring may have changed that. I also recognize that our role is to hire a superintendent and with certain philosophies and goals and empower him or her to do that, and so I don't... I empathize very much, but I also want to be cognizant of that. So I just didn't... I didn't want that to go unrecognized because I do also echo the sentiments shared. Dr. Bowden?
One of the contractual mechanisms we have in our collective bargaining agreement for classified employees allows for the placement of what is defined as a surplus employee when these types of situations take place. I was of the opinion, and it was confirmed by Mr. Limpy, we have done placements over the last two days, and this employee will be remaining with the school district through the placement process.
Very good. Thank you for the update, Dr. Bowden. Mrs. Zucker?
I understand that he'll be with the district until the end of June.
Next year. He's placed.
June of next year?
Do we need to talk about a specific...
It would be ongoing employment. He is in a permanent... He will be placed as of the 1st of July into another position within the district, but that is a permanent position.
With his expertise?
I don't have the exact placement, but it is within his pay grade.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and the motion passes unanimously by 2-0.
I move that the board authorize the creation of a police department and approve the Department of Safety, Security, and Emergency Management organizational structure as presented.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any comments? Mrs. Brown?
Yeah, this is another one of those things that we are hearing from the community, and, you know, there were many of us that would have liked to have gone forward the way we were doing things before, working with the sheriff and our police departments, but things have changed. And I can't speak for what the sheriff actually has said, but I think that our law enforcement partners want to see us move forward with this, and they will continue to work with us. I mean, we need them, they're partners, but on a day-to-day basis, we will be taking over the hiring and working of these law enforcement officers. It's going to be headed by a law enforcement officer. We're going to be hiring a police chief, and we will be training these law enforcement officers. We will be getting accreditation... I believe the word is accreditation, from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. They're not going to be the same thing as the beat cop that's out there, you know, chasing down robbers, you know, and, you know, investigating murders. I mean, they will be the kind of officers that will have to work with our children. But in addition to that, they will have to have specialized training in an active shooter situation, and they'll be working on our schools, and we believe all in all, we can find some that work with us, and if we can't, and I've told the superintendent and everyone else, I don't want to do this quick, I want to do this right. And if we can't have everybody in place, you know, by the start of the school day in August, I believe it's August 15th or something, that's okay with me. Hopefully, we can still contract with our partners in law enforcement to bridge that gap. So to me, it's not a hard and fast rule that it has to be done because we're not... I mean, I know that that's our goal, but if we run into bumps in the summer, I'm okay with that. I don't want it rushed. I want it done correctly. Our children are too important to rush this through, but I do think it's in the best interest of us and our students that we do this. But again, there is nothing more important than the work that we are doing on each of our campuses to make those campuses safe and secure. We don't want to have to deal with an armed shooter on a campus. We don't want that. We want to do everything we can to make sure we don't have anyone getting on our campus. And so we're doing the perimeter fencing, we're doing the interior fencing, we're doing the entry points, and our security department's going to be boosting up our communications and our security cameras and all of that so that we have a safer and more secure campuses. And then, yes, we will be working with these officers, and we're also going to be working with the mental health portion of this for emotional behavior. The last thing we want to do is have to face an active shooter, and we're going to take every actions we can to make sure that that never happens on our school grounds, but if it does, we're going to make sure that we have people there that will be able to take care of this, and I fully support this reorganization that we're putting forward.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. Any other comments? I just want to close with... I know I've said this, and I think Mrs. Brown touched on something that I'm encouraged to hear, and it is true, it's that it's... This is a heavy lift, and the implementation in haste is counterproductive to the goal, I think, that we're trying to achieve, which is secure our schools and campuses and ensure the safety of our students. I have done a lot of due diligence, and this is not my area of expertise, and I still believe that there's still too many unknowns for me to go forward and support this. I think that where that has existed in other school districts, it's had been implemented and taken... Been over a series of years, and really fundamentally, I just... I think that I like... I prefer our focus to remain on educating our students and partnering with the subject matter experts as it relates to law enforcement and subject matter experts as it relates to mental health and clinic, you know, medical support. So I just... But going back to just the unknowns and the unforeseen consequences, whether it be financial or not, I just am not... I don't feel, though, that we have that pathway clearly drafted out, so I will not be supporting this. But Mrs. Zucker?
Dr. Bowden, I would like to ask you a question. Did we in any way decide that we did not want to work with our partners?
No, as a matter of fact...
Are we continuing to work with them? Sorry.
Absolutely. The creation of a department requires collaboration with local departments. We're working with HR departments on hiring standards and screening selection. I believe that the creation of this department has actually drawn us closer to our community partners. We will be continuing our existing agreements with all four agencies, the four PDs and the sheriff's departments, and our middle schools. This is not an attempt to break away from the law enforcement community, but it is an action that allows us to have a force that has a unique mission and is under our... The control of the school board.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just for the record clarity, I don't... I just want to make sure I wasn't indicating or stating that we do not have current partnerships. This is just a role that I don't believe we're prepared to take on, and so that's why I will not be supporting this. Any additional comments? I have a motion and a second before us. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. The motion passes, 3 to 2. Moving on to the next item, number 39. Is there a motion?
I would move that the school board of Sarasota County approve the new job description for a social media strategist.
I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Did you want to explain anything? I know that this was also addressed at the workshop, so...
Yes. One of the early agenda items included an organizational structure for our communications department. This is one of two job descriptions that are new to the district that were included in that org chart.
Thank you. And I just want to comment that I think that this has a lot of potential in a lot of educational ways, not beyond just the communication with our community, but from an educational component because we know increasingly how challenging social media has created a very different environment for us, so I look forward to this.
The title suggests that as a social media strategist, we might be employing one of our middle school children.
As five... No. I think we should tap into the resources of our students much, much more frequently, especially in this area. I have a motion... Oh, Mrs. Zucker?
I just want to... You can always hire my grandson. Tell him to be here until September.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and the motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the next item. Do I have a... Is there a motion?
I would move that the school board of Sarasota County approve the new job description for executive director of Safety, Security, and Emergency Management.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any comments?
I think... I have a comment.
Go ahead, Mrs. Goodwin.
I think this is a new job description and a new level for Michael Andreas, our executive director, and look forward to his leadership and some of the added things that he is prepared to do. I think you were not here during the workshop today to discuss some of those things, but he is going to be fulfilling some of the things that are required of law enforcement as well as the safety and security components of the job.
Thank you. You know, actually, I think an executive director position and the significance of safety is critical. I think there are still elements of it that's expanding beyond what I'm comfortable with, but... So I will not be supporting this, but I do believe that the heightened level of a security executive director is moving in the right direction, but there are certain components of it that I won't be supporting. So unless there are any additional comments, members, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
No. And the motion passes, 3 to 2. Item number 4 to 1.
Approval of the new job description for a police officer.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any comments?
I have a comment.
Mrs. Brown?
I would like us to, and I don't want to do it today, and I would want to discuss with our... But, you know, I would like to see police resource officer or something in there to more adequately describe what they're doing because it's not just policing, they're also doing a resource. And I don't know if I could change that now, or if I would wait and do that later.
For clarification? Are you...
All right. I just would like to see police resource officer, or maybe I would make a motion to amend that to police resource officer.
Second?
I have a motion and a second on an amended motion. Any comments?
I think it more adequately reflects what they do.
Dr. Bowden?
I would suggest that the two titles that you see most often are school resource officer or school resource deputy, and that is conditioned upon the agency that they work for. If they're employees of a city police department, they are a police officer in a school resource officer role. If they are an employee of the sheriff's department, they are a sheriff's deputy who is serving as a school resource deputy. So if you were to change the title, I would direct you to the title of school resource officer because they are an officer under the law because they're not an employee of the sheriff's department, but they're in a school resource capacity.
I would like, then, to amend my motion to say school resource officer. Second?
I have a motion and a second as amended to... And I just need for clarification that the motion is that the school board of Sarasota County approve the new job description for a school resource officer.
We have to vote on the change first.
I know, but I just want to make sure that's the language that you wanted?
Yes.
And the content of the job description does not change? Just the title?
It will accept that you'd have to change police officer, school resource officer.
Title.
So you first have to vote on the amendment to the motion?
Right, okay. Yeah. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And the chair votes aye.
I'll second anything you bring up. All right. So now we're moving... I go back to moving the approval of the new job description for the school resource officer under 41.
Oh, no. James.
You've got the motion, which has... The motion has been amended, so it's now appropriate to vote on the motion as amended.
The motion for us, yes.
Right. Second?
We already did that.
So I'm going to repeat, just so we are all very clear. So now the motion before us is that the school board of Sarasota County approve the new job description for a school resource officer as amended. Do I have any comments?
No.
Okay. Members, please vote on... All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
And the chair votes nay, and it's 3 to 2.
All right. And then that, it'll also be throughout the description and the job description?
Yes. Our executive director has the authority to make minor changes throughout the job description.
I think that's an important...
We would like it to be accurate.
It doesn't change any of the qualifications which would require board action.
Okay. That's why I just wanted to clarify. Are there any comments? Mrs. Zucker?
Yes.
That completes new business. Excuse me. Then, Mrs. Zucker?
I'd like to make it very clear that I don't micromanage. It's really against me to do this, but I have a fairness issue, and when I... When that fairness issue of mine is touched, I can't stop. I have to make sure that I do everything that I can so that I feel that the fairness has been adhered to, and in this case, it has. But I learned my lesson a long time ago not to micromanage. It is not my role, so I'm sorry if I did it in this issue.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? I want to close with thanking Mrs. Goodwin for... With short notice, helping out today in my absence. The... Dr. Bowden? Sorry.
We would be remiss before we dismiss not to recognize all of our graduates. We will be convening eight graduation ceremonies over the course of the next week at our five comprehensive high schools, Pine View, Suncoast Polytech, and Oak Park, and I just didn't want tonight's meeting to close without us recognizing the tremendous life achievement that well over 2,500 of our graduates will be achieving here in the next week.
Very good. Thank you. Mrs. Brown?
And I want to take this opportunity to thank all of our staff, those who are going to be 180-day staff, not those who are going to be working 12 months all year round. We still have people here all summer long, and even some teachers will be here. But I want to thank the staff for all the hard work they've done and for the good year we've had, and for all those students that are out there that are put in everything, and the parents and the PTOs in the district who have helped us have a tremendous year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Zucker?
In regards to our graduations, this will be the first time in 20 years that I will not be at most of our graduations. My son-in-law's mother died, and we will be heading to Jacksonville for Thursday and Friday, and Saturday I'll be back. And we're going to try and make Sarasota High School... I know it doesn't sound like it's only one person, but it's so dear to me because we work all year round, and the best thing is graduation, to see those students walk across the stage and to be able to shake their hands and know that the future is safe in their hands. I mean, that's the greatest feeling going, so that's where I'll be, though. Thank you.
And our thoughts and prayers are with your family, and we will miss you. I look forward to many, many graduations in the very hectic schedule, but it is a fun... It's a fun couple of days. So congratulations to our graduates. Announcements and communications, next policy review work session is June 5th, 2018, at 4 o'clock, and next regular board meeting is at June 5th, 2018, at 6:30. If there are no other additional comments, we are adjourned.
[inaudible]
Wrong thing. Wrong thing.